Let me get his rock back.
You want a three-ring binder? Oh, 40? The biggest thing, Sheena, if Texas were to declare a new amendment, which side would you be on?
All right, Debra, tell me when you're ready.
Live stream is on, let me get my audio. Okay, we're ready.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order at 6:30. We're going to start by opening up the city council and then we'll go the planning and zoning. So we'll start with a call to order with the city council. With Councilwoman Martinez.
Oh, it's roll call?
Yes.
It's a roll call.
Tina Martinez, District 1.
Bill Garrett for District 2.
Bill King, District 3.
David Mers Jr. for District 4.
Herb Dyer, District 5.
And Darren Schroederman. Present.
All right, we'll start the planning and zoning commission at 6:31. And we'll go into roll call, starting with Mr. Alexander.
Priscilla Garrett.
Great. I'm glad nobody said their name and said that they were absent. All right, I'm going to open us up to citizens' comments in just a second. I want to really just start by explaining the intent of this. We've been going through this process, I mean honestly, we've been going through it for nearly three years now. That started with an edginess. It then migrated over to a election process and then we went into the implementation process. We've been working on it for the better part of a year now. And we have been having these public meetings as often as possible. One of the biggest frustrations is that they're like, we just want to see the end result. And we keep saying, you don't want to see the end result because we will get it wrong if we don't have these meetings in between. And so we've been doing them incrementally and it's been, and I know it takes a lot of time. And I really appreciate people that have shown up. We have people that have shown up to pretty much every single meeting. Really, really helpful, some that are coming when, when things look like they're, they're not going the way that they would like to see them. But I would encourage everybody to be a part of that process. To your city council people out there, these meetings throughout the process. This is to make sure that city council and planning and zoning have a common understanding of what we're doing with this. And then the, the last thing I'd like to address very specifically, there was a letter that... If you haven't gotten a chance, take a look in your utility bill. In the, in the newsletter section of that, I gave an explanation. I apologize, that should have gone out to give what that is. But it is language that the state of Texas mandates that we have. But we're going to be going through some of those things. But I will tell, the biggest thing that I've heard, and I, I actually heard this from my wife, she was quite upset about this. She's like, I am going to, can't make me stop. And so, so some people were afraid that that was changing and that is not the case. And we'll go through the details of that as we work. I had a conversation, but I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. Okay, so now I'm going to open it up to citizens' comments. If you'd like to come and speak for citizens' comments, if you will state your name and address. And we'll just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. No, that's free time.
Good evening again. I found the UDO very lengthy and somewhat confusing to understand since it introduces a completely new language for understanding zoning. And I'll go through some examples of things. The zoning board of adjustment is in here like it is in the current CZO. But it gives zero criteria as to how the applicant will be evaluated, none. They need, there needs to be things in there like there currently is about, here's what we're looking at. And so they know what to expect when they come, you know what to evaluate them again. Otherwise, it's just, could be anything. There's nothing about eggs at homes or along the highways or business for holidays, which we currently have. Basically, outlaws all those kinds of things. I didn't see it if it's in there. So you need to make an exception for holidays to people put up those kinds of things. There's no rules for no one. It's left a completely open interpretation. And there must be times you can have a certain amount of noise, to what limits it can be, how loud it can be, and so forth. Home occupations are allowed everywhere, it appears. But there's no description about what you can and can't do in that commercial business and residential area perhaps. Auto repair, welding shop, tattoo shop, there's nothing, nothing whatsoever. Nothing about how much traffic they can have, hours of operation, nights, weekends, you know, what about all the traffic? There's nothing in there about that at all that I saw. I think there need to be established lot widths for private dwellings and there is none. If there's planned development or whatever you want to call it now, then work that with the city. Otherwise, if I have a lot, there needs to be defined, defined widths for, for the dwelling setbacks along the edges and so forth. I don't need to go to the fire code to find that, I can put along the side there. Accessory structure on an empty lot before the primary structure is built is a bad idea. We've seen how that works here in town. There would be an accessory structure on a lot for years and never, ever see a primary structure. That's, that's a good idea. No parking. There may be a parking area to the side of the structure. We all know that parking anywhere along a driveway will have regardless of... I saw a lot about the lappedated buildings and trashy lots and historic areas. I saw nothing about that in the rest of the town. And we have plenty of that evidence out there right now. I think we need to make that across the board. Code inspection I mentioned last night says in here, they can come in to any, any convenient time coming to your house. No announcement, no reason for the visit whatsoever. You got to define what that is. Accessory buildings need to count against the total lot coverage along with the primary structure and in accessory dwelling. Otherwise, I could fill my lot up with 15 accessory buildings and have no yard. But it's all legal because that doesn't count, that isn't right. Your neighbors would really not like that. You need to, you need to fix that. There need to be specific parking requirements for homes, businesses and civic facilities. If you just leave that open, it's going to be a mess. It says you can park your RV on page 27 in the P24 or 5 area. I thought that's some thought. It's usually not a problem if it's shielded or in some kind of a barn. But just in the open, next to a fence on somebody else's property could be. I think you need to give that some thought. Examining parkland dedication for developers. I see in here, some of it could be in a floodplain, it could be in a watershed, it could be in all kinds of places. And that's a bad idea. You're basically giving them a cheap act. So, you know, if it floods on swings and the rest of that stuff, somebody's got to come clean all that stuff up. So I think it needs to go like we are.
We're, we're over time now.
We are, good, well, it is a workshop. One last thing. We need to have a philosophical discussion about historic, historic districts in this... And we really need to talk about, what does that mean to us, what's really looking for? Thank you very much.
Great, all right, thank you.
I'm looking for the video at 11.
All right, would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments? All right, so we're going to go into the next item, which is discussion on unified development ordinance workshop. I did want to make, I'm going to bring up Simple City who is... Business for helping us put this together. So I wanted to, as I, I've been digging into this a lot and listening to a lot of people and what the concerns are and looking at, there's... So you have the, I call them the Hoover codes, the codes that were put out. They started rolling out 80 years ago, 90 years ago. And these are the, the codes that everybody is accustomed to, their, their separation of homes and businesses. And what people are finding is, over this time, that creates, it's a good recipe for increased traffic. It is a great, I mean, if you think about urban sprawl with the new neighborhoods that are going on. And understand, I'm going to talk about our historic neighborhoods separately. But in talking just general city design, if you look down Petranco, all of the, the businesses are up on the front. All of the houses are back in the back. And you have to go out and you have to get onto Petranco and look at what has happened with Petranco traffic over the years. It has gotten worse than Highway 90 has. And so we're trying to figure out, how do we mix that up? Form-based code, the, this is, and even the, the... What is it, housing and urban development is looking at different ways to do this because they're finding some issues with this. In, in creating this sprawl. And so we're trying to separate that, and that is for the new growth portion of it. So it's making sure that we have, we don't create urban sprawl. The very first cities to implement the Hoover codes were New York and California. And so they reflect what they had put in California and New York. And we're trying to do this as Castroville. Say that for the new development. For the existing development, what we're saying is, good development is the best kind of... Unfortunately, we don't have the option to do that. But what we look about, the existing Castroville, what is great about this is that we've got some small shops and businesses and churches and schools. And it's mixed in with the residential. What we are also seeing and hearing a tremendous amount is that we have the right recipe for this. This is the right way to do this, but we're at the right mix. We're at the right mix of business to residential inside of the historic core. And so where sometimes form-based will make that very difficult. It basically, if you do straight form-based, then it allows people to do whatever they want. It's a form only. So the extra protection that's been in, if you look at the, I think it's in chapter four, the place type zoning districts. It's got a table of uses. And so it's a mixture of both, it's a hybrid. So for existing Castroville, we have the, the acceptable uses and we're not at the end of that. There are some things that are in the acceptable uses that need to not be in the acceptable uses. There's probably some stuff that should be in the acceptable uses, but that's what we're going to be talking about specifically for the historic core. Looking at those, I think we have three, we have just a few place types that are in our historic core. Historic core means our current built environment. The places where we live. We're more concerned about the people that live here now and that have lived here for years or decades or generations than we are about the new development. We want to make sure that they do something that replicates what we have so that we're not faced with this, this sprawl to our, primarily to our east right now. So I wanted to make those differentiations. And as you start looking at uses, what do you want to see around you? Look in specifically in that use table, our current codes have the same thing. In the CZO, the comprehensive zoning ordinance, it has the table of uses and it says, these are acceptable in these certain areas. And we've got the same thing in, in our current proposed UDO. So we need to go through those and look at that and say, in my neighborhood, do I want to have, do I want to have a three-plex across the street? If the answer is no, we make sure that we have it included in there, that that is not allowed in there. If we say, you know, if it's done right and some, like if there's a use that you think might be okay, but it needs scrutiny. Then you put it as a special permit required. If you say, no, this doesn't belong here, then advocate to have that disallowed in that area. So that's the easiest way to create that protection around us. For the rest, for the outside, we'll be a little bit more liberal in encouraging them to do better growth. And I think I, I had mentioned that with some of the new developments, we're asking them to mix in some commercials, some retail, some... We're not talking about like massive industrial, we're talking about commercial doctors' offices and retail shops and restaurants and schools and churches. And mix that in a little bit better like what we have currently. So I wanted to give that foundation. I'd like to hear from Simple City about how yesterday went, like to get some feedback on that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Simple City.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, people of Castroville. It's lovely to see you all on this brisk evening. Brianna is handing out the red line and, yeah, it's the red line for the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance for Castroville. We took the existing UDO and we converted and pretty much linked where you see what's in the UDO or CZO currently and linked it to the UDO. We did it today, so if there's, there's typos or discrepancies and it's, it's kind of a general swath. But this will help kind of guide along with the cheat sheet that you see with the place type zoning classifications. There's a lot of information, so we're trying to keep it tight and summarize for you all. Let me, and first, we'll do some technology fun and see if this works. Got to allow it.
If we could just get the developers to do that.
I don't think we have enough water for that. The smoke in the background, we could probably...
We could probably accommodate the smoke. It's for creatives.
Priscilla, your chair is up against the banister. You can't move it.
Fancy.
You can do a lot of things, but you can't do that.
Okay, can we see it on both sides?
Yep.
Great. All right, so there's really two sections to how we're going to break up today's meeting. The first, I'm going to give a general walkthrough of the draft UDO chapters, kind of to give the basic structure. How each chapter forms, how each functions. And the second will be some policy direction that we're seeking on a couple of key areas pertaining to a couple zoning district discrepancies that we're asking for, policy direction and others specifically around cottage courts, ADUs. And really nailing that down tonight is really the goal for us. Right. So last night went really great. It is a scary letter to receive by state law. And we believe that the majority of people walked away with a clear understanding of what's going to, how this impacts their individual property. How it impacts the city as a whole. And it was generally pretty positive. We saw a lot of new faces, which was really exciting. And I believe even online, we got upwards of 100-plus new engagement from this whole process. And they were able to have the same sort of conversations and we were able to give them the same sort of attention that we have been to other communities who have been through this process through the year. And yeah, I, I thought it went really well. So yeah, without that, I will start with the general UDO outline. So for the first chapter, we have intent and general provisions. This is like the legal language, authority, applicability, purpose, intent, rules of construction. On the red line, you'll see a lot of sections that are linking to chapter one that might have been somewhere else. We are clustering those either state regulations or due process in that chapter one section. Chapter two is the development process. It's a really long chapter because it encompasses all of the possible development processes. Well, just, yeah, all the possible development processes. Chapter three is in effect your subdivision ordinance, it's neighborhoods and additions and subdivisions. Chapter four is your place type zoning district, it is your zoning classifications. Chapter five is your private lot development standards. You'll see a lot of the redlining move to chapter five as well. Essentially, imagine chapter four as the public development standards and the general overall zoning classifications. And chapter five as the private, how it impacts a private lot, how that private lot form and functions. Chapter six is the historic preservation section. We tried our best to carry over all that is existing and bring it over into chapter six. We are in, in communication with the attorney, the city attorneys as it stands now to make sure that's completely zipped, so there's no changes there. And chapter seven is, is definitions. So yeah, I'll, I'll start with chapter one. As I said before, it's legal language, purpose, intent. But purpose and intent is something that can be governed by law and you can rule, you can regulate based off of purpose and intent. So we tried to capture these elements in a intensity section, going as broad as the city and coming as far down as the block, street and building. So that's why you see, cities are a finite place with geographic boundaries. They shall grow in a logical progression wherever possible, natural features, including streams. These sound like general statements, but these are actually things that you can regulate off of. And if someone is not meeting that, you can point back to chapter 1.3.2 and say, you are not doing that. And that goes all the way down into the block, street, lot and building descriptions. This is the translation table, it's been shown many times. It is in effect the way that we have taken, it was, it was one of the starting points that we took the existing zoning districts and translated them into the current place types. We tried to keep the districts as close as possible. And then you have input from the community and just professional observations that we've seen from there. What you see from the blue of the historic district kind of bleeding into the rest of them. That is a manifestation of the intent that we say that we studied the historic character of Castroville whenever we did the DNA analysis. The boundaries that encompass that in DNA analysis were only in the horseshoe. Because that is the area that Castroville wants to preserve and protect. So we figured studying that and taking those standards are the way that they continue into the drafted UDL. So next is the development process. All of the development processes and working with staff, we have carried over the existing development processes and carried them over in pretty much a direct translation. In addition to the other numerous development standards that come in this, in this section. By state law, every single development standard has to have a checklist and has to have step-by-step how you go through it. And that's all in there, so everything is, is matching state law on that requirement. What it also does is gives a go-to place for anybody with, dealing in any section of the development process, whether that be community members, staff, council, anybody looking to develop in the city. And gives a very clear understanding of, understanding and, and ability for staff to administer based off of those development processes. I'll skip to the image of it. We try and make it as visual as possible. Oftentimes, these legal documents can be pretty hard to understand and read if you're not a trained professional, if you don't work in the industry. So this is the intent of making it to where anybody can approach these documents and have a clear understanding of how they form and function. I'll go back here to the process table and validating with staff, this is more or less the existing way that development process works in the city. And we try to capture that in another visual way in table as you see here. And that's repeated once again in numerous tables. You'll see this throughout the document where things are said multiple times in different places. And the intent of that is people come, they don't read it like a book. Well, y'all might have, have had to, but people don't typically read and they shouldn't have to read it like a book to completely understand what they are concerned with because there are many reasons to engage with these types of documents. So sections can have repetitions and we do our best to make sure that any of those repetitions are, are met. As it's even said in chapter one though, just as a statement, the text carries subset. So if there's discrepancy or there's confusion, the text is kind of the base from everything. And tables or any sort of additional language, they would not be, they would not supersede the baseline text. So chapter three is your neighborhood additions and subdivisions. This is your subdivision ordinance. Whenever we say we are building neighborhoods, not subdivision, is something that y'all have heard many times from us. This is probably the most direct way that you will see that actually come to form. And that comes through development patterns, neighborhood plans, plating. We're changing the structure a little bit to where the baseline is an addition of a neighborhood. So instead of adding one in, one out from a development, you instead are mandated to build a grid in the same dimensions that were done in the original Castro area. With the intent that any sort of neighborhood, any sort of development coming in has to meet these standards. And that's where we start to loop in these traditional development power, these development patterns as you see in the comprehensive plan. Those were the visionary documents and they're also emulated and linked into code here. Where what is allowed in a traditional neighborhood development, cluster land, cluster land development, village-centered development, they're expressed into code here and can be administered as such. So something like the growth guidance map is a very...
Can we pause there for just a second and go back?
Yeah.
Just because there's a lot of people here that haven't heard some of this stuff.
Right.
Sometimes we run through this because, I'll be honest with you, we have spent so many hours and these guys have spent even more hours in digging through some of this stuff. So a lot of this stuff, it just makes sense based on what we've already learned. So just to make some clarifications, this is talking about when new developers come at us and they say, we want to build out on this 350 acres, it was a farmland, and we want to put in, you know, 47,000 new homes. And we're like, no, don't do that. So this is saying that the mix that we have here should be replicated in that area. And so what you see here are traditional neighborhoods. You have different options that they can put these pieces together so that you have, if they want to have clustered land development, make sure that that's close to a village center. So if you have a higher density of housing, you also have goods and services that are around them. A lot of people nowadays are looking more for these walkable neighborhoods. And so if you create more, more housing, you want to make sure that they have the goods and services close enough that they don't have to get in their car, go out on Highway 90 and, you know, go across town to get it. So these are the building blocks of the new neighborhoods. Not saying that we're looking at subdividing existing neighborhoods, these are specifically for those.
Yeah, and so I can speak a little bit more on those, those standards. Traditional is, what you see here is a traditional neighborhood development. It is small block grid, services in the center, and it naturally bleeds into residential as you go forward. Village and center are, are cluster center are essentially ways to accomplish clustering the development in a way to preserve open space and natural land by requiring like a percentage of natural space. So essentially, a development will say, we're going to go this percentage of a traditional neighborhood development or we're going to choose to go with a village or a cluster. And that has its own set of standards and they fall within each place type beyond that. So like a P4 or a P5 would be a, like the intense center part of the region. And then you have something like a P3 or maybe even a P2 to fit in with the cluster. These are, these are ways that we can help structure the conversation. And that is continued even in the neighborhood plan. It's, it's another way to go through the development process where everyone comes at the table at the very beginning and discusses the needs from the development side and from the city side to get things straight from the beginning. Rather than coming, a development coming with what they want to build and the negotiating starting from their point. It reverses that conversation to where the city is able to say, these are our standards, is that we meet it? These are what we're looking in these areas, check if you get this, this and this. It's a really easy way to make sure everyone is on the same page at the very beginning. And these go and supplement with the development agreement documents that we've passed and the comprehensive plan. So there are a series of documents that even if they're not engaging with them at the beginning through something like a neighborhood plan, it's really easy to refer to them to make sure that it is, everyone's on the same page, understands what people here have worked so hard to define and to list out and make sure that those laws are actually being administered, listened to and used. Because there, as y'all know, there's no point in having them if they're not used. So chapter four is the place types. This is the zoning classifications where you have the place type descriptions, that's where the map is and it's where the development standards table is first introduced and is then later repeated throughout chapter five. This has been said before, but for those of you all who haven't heard, these are... these are the structure of, of the zoning based off of place types with the least, see it as the least intense to the most intense. With P1 being nature. Nature is exactly what it sounds like. It is for nature. It is zone for nature. And any structure has to go through some sort of special use in order to even be a temporary structure there. So there's even a process in making sure that that nature is not slowly encroached on over time. It's like, "Well, we just put this here and then it's gone." They're primarily placed around the floodplain to protect that natural river frontage. If there's other additions that you guys would like to incorporate in what you define as nature definitions, please feel free to enter them. But with P2 rural, those are, there's not a lot of examples, but it is a rural lot. It's where someone is working on the land or lives on at least two and a half acres. It's a large piece of property. And so we give it to where, it's just a definition to have that, that large distant lot where it's only one building and so on. P2.5 is the historic residential. This is the elements of the historic Castroville area that we studied. Particularly in the residential study, we studied those residential homes and the elements of them to get the lot dimensions, to get where they are placed on the lot, how many, how much, all of those. These, as you see, primarily sit within the horseshoe of Castroville. And the intent is to keep those Castroville lots, those 12,000 square foot, however they may be, at that, at that size and keep that real rural urban character that honestly was, was something that we loved when we first came to Castroville. It's a, it's a really unique element of the city. And, and this is, is our best attempt to preserve that. So P2, or P3 is neighborhood. See it as, as the, the conventional neighborhood standards that are more seen in more modern developments. They're typically around, do the map. They're typically around the newer developments of Castroville. The tiny areas where you see dark blue. To make those clear, the way that we, we use rules as a way to construct the zoning map, we essentially create a formula and that formula creates something. So it's not an arbitrary, this is that, we'll know that building. And then you can run into the millions of whatevs. So the reason that exists is those lots are smaller than 12,000 square feet. And we even made 12,000 square feet for P2.5 in order to encompass that breadth of, of lots that you see inside the horseshoe. If we kept, I believe whenever we tried to do 13887, it made a lot more blue and it made a lot more P3. So we, that was kind of the adjustment of that rule in order to catch those discrepancies. The point of those is that they, 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 they're, they're just discrepancies within them. And also you'll see, well, I'll finish out the rest.
Real quick.
Yeah.
You might want to make a note of this. In the hard copy, the copy that we're looking at, the big dark blue spot at the top right is light blue in the ordinance.
Yes. Yeah. So this has been a continually updated document and that, you're absolutely correct. And what you're seeing here is our most up-to-date version. It's what we've placed in it. I mean, up until last week, we're getting input from the community. And if it's an easy type in, type out, you've been seeing that throughout the document where things have changed here and there. And the same will continue is we'll take these input and there's, I literally have a list that I've been writing since yesterday that it's, it's almost filled the page of, "Oh, we'll change this. Well, they said this in this section and that's actually wrong." Well, this means that we're trying to capture those as much as possible. And that's the point of community engagement. These are huge documents and they, we need to make sure that they, they capture everything.
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm sorry. So I, I apologize, but I am running this meeting. But I, what I wanted to say is that I would encourage, if you have questions on this, please raise your hand. I will recognize you. I know. I'm just, we need to, as we try and run efficient meetings, I just want to make sure that we keep some kind of, some semblance of order here. So yes, please ask your question and.
Okay.
So, no, please let her ask her question.
You were pointing out the horseshoe area. Can you tell me what color your horseshoe area or the area that you were looking at? What's your, I just wanted to know what the-
Yeah, great. So the, inside the horseshoe is the planned Castro area. It is, you can see from pretty much everything that is in light blue. It is the original platted, all the original platted properties from the original Castro map. There's not, there's like clues to them. Yeah. They're like almost there, but not. Yeah.
I had one right there.
I know. I'm used to seeing like 15 of them.
Yeah. If you look at the plan, it's like plan to Castroville. It's something that I think Theodore Jean Thiel had put together and done as the original-
This is, this is pretty much it. If you, if you take that light blue, so where it takes those box cuts, that is, that is the area. So I'm using it as like a colloquial term. I've heard a number. Planned Castro area, there's a number of them.
The inside bend.
Inside bend in the river.
Yeah, basically. It's, it was, what was originally plotted when Henry Castro came.
Okay. Oh, okay. And so the next place type is place type 3M. That's manufactured housing. There are no additional manufactured housing outside of the carryovers from what currently existed. That's a federal law. You have to keep them where they are. And then P4 is the neighborhood commercial. This is, it serves two purposes. It's a transitionary district from a high intensity commercial to a residential neighborhood. But specifically for Castroville, as what is, in effect, the high intensity commercial is not incredibly highly intense. So we're keeping that and not like throwing it up with a more intense zoning classification of something like P5. So P4 is house form commercial, small buildings. They, they don't take up a large, a large intensity in the sense that P5 does, which is more of a strictly commercial district. The easiest example that I, that I use is think of Fredericksburg along the main street where you have those three-story buildings that come up right to the building or right up to the street. And those are the intent behind those highway districts to create a, a new district for commercial to add capacity in a way that, from what we've heard from the community, these highway lots are open to that change. So P4 will have a lot more. It's honestly the most flexible district. So there's, there's been confusion on whether or not it's not a strictly commercial district in any way. If you have a house and it, and it serves your residential purpose, that's also what it's for and it's able to be that. You're not non-conforming in any capacity. And if anything, we encourage that. That's, that's the beauty of mixture is that you create uniqueness and, and kind of an added tapestry of how the urban form feels. So that's that translation. Here's a couple zoomed in sections. As you'll see in the light green is the historic overlay. This is what was the HE district. It, it functions as a zoning overlay, so it functions the same. But these should be the boundaries. And we're, we're vetting with staff, we're vetting with the community. These should be the existing boundaries of the historic overlay and they, they operate as such. What the historic overlay will do and the way we've done in the code is it adds the, the regulations from historical commission, from the design, historical design regulations, guidelines that y'all have placed. And we've added those just as a straight appendix. So. Correct. And, and that's something we've been hearing. It's, it's small, it's light, it's even hard for, for my eyes to see it. So we are going to increase it just to make it more clear. Like, correct. Make it more bold, make it more clear. Because it is such an important district. We want there to be no confusion on, on what that district is and where it stands. So yeah, the, that appendix remains as is. There's no change to it. It's great. And, and we're happy to carry it over. The second appendix that we added is the commercial design regulations that operates as, as appendix B. And it's a similar carryover from the design regulations that y'all have done in the commercial districts from before. The last zoning, well, one of many, one of the other carryovers that we've done is in the transition district. It's the first time that you see them on a map, but it was, anything that is a budding, what was a commercial zone. So along what is now P2 or P5. Anything that is a budding that, that is a residential use only. So that doesn't include P4. They are allowed to have a special request for a commercial use. But that does apply only to the owner of the lot and not the lot itself. So if that owner was deciding to leave and they take their practice with them, it doesn't mean that that special use carries over. If someone else wanted to come in and carry that business in some capacity, they would have to come up to council and ask for a special request as well. So that's where you see those yellows. There'll be, yeah, that's where you see those yellows. Yeah. And it, yeah.
That is in our existing CZO. It's, but, but we never had it put on a map. So they put it actually on the map.
Yeah.
Conforming to the existing CZO.
Yeah. Yeah. And we, we didn't change any of the way that it's placed. We changed a little bit of the wording in that it, the intent is for it to fall within a place type. And you fit the special use within that place type rather than creating its own set of rules. So some of those were shaved down a little bit. But I encourage you all to compare the two. If you feel like there are certain elements that were not carried over, that should be carried over, please let us know. I, I just took a stab at it and vetted with staff and vetted with the PAC. And so far it's been good, but this is what this process is for. So next we have the-
I have, I have a question before we go on.
Yeah.
Are other current zoning overlays also carrying, carrying over? For example, PUD overlays?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Those are their own and they, they carry over as such. And lastly, what is considered an employment center is an east-
Actually, before we go on, Councilman King has another question.
Two people have asked me this question. Going back, if you look at the original federal designated historic district. And in that, we have our historic zoning residential, which isn't, doesn't completely cover that. But like there's one property, if you look at where the landmark in is.
Yeah.
And that little purple one right next to it.
Yeah.
So that's all within the federal historic district. If that particular property owner wanted to transfer his property to the historic district from where it is now, which is P5.
Right.
Is that a simple process or not a simple process?
I believe it. It's, it-
I think I can answer that a little bit. Because in our HLC guidelines, we do regulate how things get put into the historic district. So we have to go through that process because they're not using that process as a right now since it's an appendix. That process in the historic design guidelines is very lengthy. So it is a lengthy process to do so. It has, it's basically, it's almost like a zoning change. It has to go through the whole public process, the public hearing. I think there's even a little bit more that goes into it, but it is already very lengthy in that historic design guidelines that we have.
Extending the historic district, I think for the additional, how do you extend a district for the historic district?
State law changes in either that or-
More stringent, yeah, they have a better answer, my best.
Yeah, that's correct. If you're going, if it, if it is a district that you're expanding, it's a local district, there's a little bit more to it.
Now, this is all within the federal district.
Yeah.
Well, so the federal district is a designation only. It's not a zoning district. But because this is a zoning change on that one. So for instance, that's the same purple that everything is along 90. And, but for that property owner, to, he just has, he would have to follow the, the, the Historic Landmark Commission guideline, I guess is what I call them. And in there, there was a process that tells you how to do it. But if he wanted to do it voluntarily, then, then does it matter? So it really doesn't matter if it's within the federal designated historic district. It just, and I assume it has to be contiguous.
But it's one of the, it's one of the original, it's the 1969 survey too, isn't it?
It, it is. Yes.
But, but there's a process in there.
There's, and I think the process is the same. And we're still working with the same, in our, with that historic district. It's like, and what could have been 96 district, like those 96 homes look like.
Right.
I think we should get a answer to that question. That will probably be there. But I would say if they needed an answer, they'd want one right now. It would, I think before, if they were not, let's just say they're not on the 96 homes and we're not, and they're not getting registered right now what they want to be, then they would have to follow those design guideline processes to get into that district designation.
And like Darren said, that is one of the 96 homes.
Yeah.
So it's already in there. It's just not on this thing as in the historic.
I think to make it broader and, and less specific, because I don't want to get in the weeds about individual things, if that's okay. But we, I think it would be really good if somebody sees that they are in a district that they feel is different than what they were in and they wanted to go through a process to request to be in one of the other district types. It would have to still go through the public process. But we should make sure that that's clear about how they would do that.
Yeah.
The, you're talking-
Say that again, please.
The process to request an alternative place type is online right now. And people are requesting that. So the community has the ability to request that.
Okay.
Can we talk to you separately or?
I have a couple of questions for some of the presentation you've done so far.
Okay.
Oh, lots of us.
Yeah.
The city of Castro, you referenced the original horseshoe.
Yeah.
You just lay it out. It's in lots.
Yeah.
Three to 15, which is 41, 46, 7 feet. The lots were 40 by 60, which is 83 feet or 34. And by 166, which translates out to 13,891 square feet. Because you may not fully notice that, and I'm sure you do, the CZO specifically states the historic areas as 13,800 square feet. The 12,000 square foot reference is for new development on the peripherals of the city. So I would strongly encourage staying with the 13,000 A because there are properties in the core that were turned down variances in the past because they weren't 13,000. They were 12, but they weren't 13,000. There were configurations of lots that were spires to make that. The subdivisions we have, Riverbuck.
Yeah.
Country Village, West High, they're all 12,000 square foot plus lots. They were laid out and planted that way. The new development agreements or whatever the city has been done with the 6,000, 7,000 difference. Whatever, those are development needs. But before they start those, the 12 is for the development. The core of the city is 13,000. If you reach in all to 12,000. I want to make a comment here, one comment. I made this to the council before. I'm going to make it again. Okay? When you reference about leading this, then I, I respect the position that we're, we're not changing anything. We're trying to make things look the same. But I've encouraged people to look at it as a developer.
Right.
Not as a citizen. Because a developer's first mission is to look for the weak spots. Look for the things that you can advantage of. And if a developer comes to this account and they're fortunate enough, and they will when they start throwing money in, to buy a block. A block, which is typically eight lots right now.
Yeah.
But if you make it 12,000, then you can make it nine lots. Just like, just by a recline, just that quick. Because you, you, you've increased the gap. That's a developer looking at your ordinance the way you're writing it. Okay? And I know there's developers that come all the time and look for the weak spots and challenge different things. I know that. But when I was with the city, I know they're doing it right now. Okay? So I would encourage you, these original layouts that were originally out as 13,800 or 13,800. You referenced that 12,800. And the twelve thousand, just like it is now, you reference outside of that historic.
Can I ask for a clarification on that, do you mind?
Sure.
So what I heard them say was that, well, first of all, the main concern is that people are going to come in and abuse this. And you've got to look at it, you're absolutely right. You got to look at how people can abuse the system. But on this one, you said that you didn't go down to twelve thousand square foot lots because that added a lot more, basically a whole new zoning district inside of that?
Well, what happens is the, several of the lots that are twelve thousand square feet in this area that had been previously subdivided lower than the thirteen eight eight seven or the thirteen nine nine one, it would have transferred them to place type three, and that would have allowed them to subdivide those lots into smaller lots. And so it would have actually eroded the lots that are already protected. So having a smaller lot size of twelve thousand will protect more of the larger lots at that twelve thousand and above. So it says in there specifically twelve thousand square feet or larger would be reserved under that district.
So the protection that we put in place, and, and this, none of this is set in stone.
Sure.
But what I'm thinking is, the protection that's set in place, I think that it's been very clear that this is what people will accept. You can't zip through a zoning change. You've seen that fairly recently, you know, last year, there was a request on a zoning change, there was a request on a subdivision.
It was my, this next one.
Exactly, and that was something that was very clear that the.
It was true because council was going to work it out.
So the thing about that is that with, having that in there, if you put, even if you put the twelve thousand square foot lot that kind of encompasses pretty much everything, if somebody comes, they can't come in and zip through it, there's a very defined process. And one of the problems that we had with that one was that the process got convoluted. And so having the, the process maps on here that we all agree in one place, it doesn't get changed, it doesn't get added somewhere else. This is the process, a very public process. If somebody came through to request that to be divided, I could pretty much guarantee you that the community would come out in force, just as they did before, and say, no, we don't want this.
Well, well, sir, with all the respect, as long as you have staff with the authority to do minor fact changes, it's a staff decision. It doesn't come to council. So.
So if.
You should change that order.
Right.
That's my opinion, that's the way the rules are now, staff has some certain.
Not, not for subdivision.
No, because the stuff, because if it's four lots or bigger, it has to go through.
Okay, okay, let me, let me, if I made something else to, to, just one more. The lots that are in this core that are not, or excuse me, the thirteen thousand eight hundred is referenced only in this historic zone, historic district. The lots that aren't that are, are, are actually considered, they were done, they're considered non-conforming use. There's a, there's a place in the CZO, you don't have to call this zone or that zone, they're still in the same zone. They're just considered non-conforming use structures. So what's, what's the problem with continuing using that?
Non-conforming uses is integrated into the language as well. The reason is, all of the people that reside in those homes today would be considered non-conforming. This is an ability to make their houses legal, so that when they're looking to do anything else, they now have a legal tract of land under their zoning classifications, rather than artificially making them non-compliant. If they've got a legal non-conforming lot, any additions to structures, trying to build a garage, build a deck, you've got legal non-conforming issues and it's going to create hangups through the entire process and any changes to that lot. Allowing this would, would be, allow them to actually have a house that is legal under the ordinance.
So, well, I think that if we're, if we're trying to protect against subdivision, outside of what it is, somebody trying to take one of our existing historic lots in the historic, one of our existing lots in the historic core, trying to change that and subdivide it, make it smaller, add in additional properties. I think we've got protections in that process, in that public process. We can add additional protections in there, but the goal is to make sure that we don't, you know, we don't start piling up and subdividing and all that. The, the problem that I was talking to the attorney about was, and that's part of the process that we've got to be really careful about here, is with non-conforming use in any of these, it does create some legal issues. It will create additional legal overhead for the city in dealing with people that have non-conforming uses. If they want to continue to use it exactly the way that they are, that actually causes more issues for them. So we're trying to fit it, the non-conforming uses into a zone type where it is broadly applicable, so that we've got like types together.
Well, my next question, and this is, I think I know the answer, but I'd like to hear this. Is those blocks that you have in this, could that be considered spot zoning?
Which spots are you?
The blue ones in the square that he.
Yeah, I had the same, I had the same question.
That I'm considering, I'm considering, I'm saying the zone is conforming. You're saying they have to be resolved a different way. So could they be considered spot zoning when they're scattered around like that?
I would have to look at those individually. I mean, typically it's not, it, I don't know enough about it as I sit here right now.
Okay, just one I have.
So, and I asked the exact same question. Is that actually legal? I'm sorry, Councilman Carey.
I want to, to just put this out there. There are a lot of lots in the current historic district and a lot of lots that will be in our historic district, which are far smaller than thirteen thousand eight hundred square feet. There are entire blocks because of the irregularities of surveying over the last hundred and fifty years, that some blocks are not substandard size and some are larger than standard size and they're excessive lots. And there are, are lots in the city that are much smaller than thirteen thousand eight hundred square feet, but they are still designated as whole original lots.
And I'll agree with you because you're, the person having any valid surveys, Mr. Alexander before, told me many times, there's still properties in the city that have not been surveyed. And he, he was, he, he was pretty good at the bars and he would always like to do a block first. And he would always tell people the first one I survey on that block is the biggest lot, because that's the way it measures out, and then they all go smaller accordingly.
Well, we've changed practices a bit since.
I know, I know, but that, that was, that was thirty years ago practice.
One last thing, the, the, if you look down, for instance, if you're traveling down Mexico Street, you will see almost a full phase shift in Mexico Street as you're heading south to north.
Yes, sir.
And that is the product of that kind of, of evolving boundary work over the last century and a half.
I agree.
Had a question.
Yeah, I'm just curious if the gentleman gave him the line.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't introduce him. This is our city attorney.
Apologize, yes.
Yes, he is, he is on vacation and Leroy, the interim, was not here.
I only have this, this is more for the city, but for all, or actually all. The, the conference is only yours. This is a mayor brought up, the potential development that really got the invasion in the cities though. Clearly states in there that pending development has to be, in the city, it has to be more than three acres. It was written that way because a standard city block is two point five six acres, two point five six, very important, two point five six. But yet he dropped the three, now the two point five. So anybody that controls a block can do a planned unit development in this city? Are here the rules, is that correct? Because if that, if that's right, that need to be raised back up, so it can't be done on single.
Matt, go ahead.
Uh, it required, so if anything, two point five acres or less would allow for an infill development application. It's not a planned unit development, but it allows them to go through an ulterior process before submitting their development process, because it would be considered an infill development.
So when the residential, it'd be basically come to the city and actually develop a plan within a city block.
It would actually allow them to do an analysis of what's happening in the boundaries around that to determine how the block would be developed.
Okay, let's, let, okay. All right, hold on, we're gonna, so, hold on, we're gonna, these are things that we know there are issues, that we know that, we're just trying to find the boundaries of that. I think that, that the opinions of, of everybody are very clear and they're actually fairly well aligned. And so we are going to work through that and, and look out for these kinds of things. And that's the exact right thing to do. If our, our numbers are, and I'll get you in one second, if our numbers are wrong one way or the other, this is the opportunity. That's why we're having this meeting, so that we can make adjustments and, and make them correct. You got a question?
So the blue spots up there in that high blue, how were they chosen? Nobody can answer that?
He just, he was just explaining that, could you explain that again, please?
Yeah, so the way we did it was.
They're just very hard.
Yeah, they, it looks strange, but it is because they are lots that are smaller than twelve thousand square feet. And it, it could really be by a percentage. And so that's why a lot of those lots you see, they're kind of irregular, even the ones that are actually a square. We were talking about it yesterday, where the fence line of the other property actually comes closer, that makes that lot smaller. So those are smaller than twelve thousand square foot lots is why they, they weren't chosen, they're just based off of that formula. Yeah, and, and that's, that's a fair point, and.
I'm sorry, what was, what was the point?
If there.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. They're still in the historical district, so I'm going to have to get my air.
So we have the option, what we're talking through with this, if we can keep the conversations all the same one, the options that we have are to make all of those existing non-conforming, or we can have them as designated as we know that it's something a little bit different. And so we're just trying to figure out what is the right way to do that. We're not trying to change those, we're not trying to make them into something different. We're trying to keep as much of it as similar as possible, and that's why those have been put in as, as a different zoning type.
Okay, I have a question. Just speaking to the data that's used in your software. Is that straight parcel data from the county tax office? Or is that referencing deeds that speak to specific favors and circumstances? Speaking, it, yes, okay. So, but is it their, their geometry of the lots, or is it referencing deeds? Because there are errors and lack of accuracy in parcel data through GIS as compared to referencing actual deeds. I know we haven't gone and surveyed every lot, right? So when you're getting down to lots that are two square feet, all the rest of them, I think we need to consider the accuracy of our data.
I think that we can go back through all those, those, the lots, see kind of what they're all worth.
And actually, it's hard to do for every single parcel, as I'm sure you all know, to go back and watch the deeds. But we can definitely look at those and really look at what the DNA tie has versus what we're bringing in these all over the country class.
Might not be a bad idea just to do like a table that shows those, that shows which lots they are, what size they are. And that way, if there's little tweaks that we can make, we can do that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I know your lot is very small.
All right, Councilman Carey.
I want to address the two point five acre limitation, and that is also state law. The state of Texas says that if there's a vision in the city and you're creating parcels that are greater than two point five acres, plating is not required. But when you divide something to smaller acreage, yes, it is. So that two point five is also a key, it's a trigger point.
Could you, could you tell me what that state law, what was number?
That is a local government code, section two twelve, and it's item two twelve point zero zero four five.
Four, four five?
And four six.
Okay, thank you.
Zach, have you listened?
Yeah.
So in that three areas after where development, what takes precedent? Is it the code meeting, it's, it's in a historic district?
Right.
So historic district code protect precedent in development if that were to go forward first. Which then would preclude you being able to do a typical, right?
Correct. And, and as a blanket statement, I, I think we can make an analysis for, for two of the issues that seem to have popped up. One, to make sure that these dark blue lots are not ending up in the worst case scenario of them getting subdivided, of them developing outside of a character that would be out of the P two five. However, we have to define that, we can work through a couple of options to make sure that is what happens, that's what's very clear and clearly administrable. And the second, we can make sure that, to, to answer your issue, Commissioner Alexander, that there's no possibility in any way that you can subdivide the lot and, or create like an additional nine or something like that. It could be as simple as you can make it two thousand and one, so. No, like you can't like create like an additional nine or something like that. And that can be a difference between making it twelve thousand and one square feet or, or, you know, to where the math wouldn't make sense.
I'm just referencing if someone, and it's only a matter of time before somebody controls a whole block. And if someone here were to plan development in their local residential, or they, or they want to replating something else, you tell them they couldn't replating their nine lots?
Of course you would, basically, it's all of the geometry.
Yeah.
If the lot dimensions were such that it wouldn't physically work, and which I think that it already does.
Those are strange things, the cookie covered the lines.
Well, we'll make, we'll, from your perspective, from what you're saying, like, we'll put the eyes of a developer on and really make sure that that is, that is lock tight, because that is a.
Can we, can we do something, I'll get you in one second? Can we do something else? And this, I'll ask specifically of council and the P and Z commission. Let's work on what these scenarios are. They're valid concerns, looking, I think that having all of our eyes on it as well. Let's get that to the, to the chair and council, if you can get that to Deborah. Let's compile those, those questions, those concerns, so that we can address these outliers. And that way, because right now we can go back and forth about the, the minute details, but if we say, these are our actual concerns, this is where I see abuse could be possible, how are we protecting against that? I think that's the best way to look at it.
Yeah.
What are your concerns, how are we protecting against that? What would, what is the path of least resistance for somebody who's going to try and do something that we don't want them to do? So I think that if we do it like that, is that acceptable? Okay. Something else I think we should do on our next map when we do this, let's just do another, like a separate one that shows all of the empty lots. Is that easy enough? That should be fairly easy to do, right?
We have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that would be good, because then people can see in, like, how many actual empty lots are there? Where are they located? Where are these pockets that might be abused and how do we, how do we deal with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, oh, I'm sorry, you had a question? He reminded, he kicked me.
I live along the highway, so one of the very few houses that were left on the highway. And I see that the potential rezoning would allow small and large apartment complexes, if I could say, to sell and use in the past. Is there a way to kind of take that off the table? And I only say that because Constantinople is the border to Highway ninety and the Montrose Road, right? So it would be nice to see the corridors that lead into Castro other than Highway ninety, to see how the, the new potential zoning would affect those areas. Because I mean, we haven't seen any as far as analysis or comparative analysis as to the impact that actually pushed that through, right? So Constantinople, if I get pushed out, which would be two lots, because my grandma, my grandma lived next door, still in my room. What would should they do? So those are just the factors that happen. It would be interesting to see the corridors.
For my CZO, I have my CZO out here.
Yeah.
I think, isn't under, I'm sorry, I was, I have my table of uses on the CZO. On the current CZO table of uses, isn't that the Highway ninety, the apartments are currently in there, are they?
Yes, they're already allowed there.
So they're already allowed there, and so the, the best answer is, please don't sell your lot. The other answer is, we like you staying there, please. If everybody would just stop selling property, we wouldn't have to deal with this. But, so, that, that is one thing, so a lot of this stuff, we tried to carry over the uses that were already there. And so then we would, but if they did that, it would go out to a public process again.
But one thing that we are trying to adjust from this is the way that these apartment complexes are constructed would not be in the huge complex where they have their own personal drive and they have these huge towers. Like as you're driving to San Antonio, you see those. Instead, they're, they would fit in the form more similar to something that you see in Fredericksburg. The parking is placed in the rear, you create a real pedestrian front, where it creates more of an urban front edge and actually ties into the fabric of the city, rather than being its own separate box, which oftentimes happens.
Okay. You said if you wanted to just, and you don't want to leave anytime, you're saying, you have all these plans, you know, in this, or Canada, or this, or this, and there. So what do we do, do we kind of hack up and something else? Because that's one of the issues that we're dealing with.
For, the reason I keep saying Fredericksburg.
Because there, those are, and then we just try to.
We prefer, yeah. Super fair, yeah, super fair. Yeah, so Place Type 5 is unique in the sense that there, the only thing that currently exists on Place Type 5 is a pretty auto-dominant development style. So in conversations all the way back from here, we're like, okay, what can we transform this into in a way that still ties into the fabric from Casterville, but is able to kind of take it forward in a way that does create a good urban form, does connect well with Casterville? And so, yeah, we did study other existing Texas towns that those are their historic development patterns that were carried over from people that immigrated pretty close by from where people from Casterville carried over. So in the rest of the place types, from Place Type 4 to 2 to 1, those are as close to Casterville as we can get. But for Place Type 5, it's because what currently exists is not at all any. So we're kind of trying to pull a number of inspirations and examples and contexts that also exist here and incorporate them into this district.
So, and I want to clarify on that really quickly, Bruce. So, no, I understand that. So we don't want to be, Fred, I mean, the whole reason that they came in, if we can just bring all the conversations into one, again, I don't mind opening it up. But the reason that they came in, the very first thing that they did was study what it was about Casterville that made it unique. So they looked at that very specifically. And so all of the stuff that happens, so what we're trying to do inside historic Casterville is leave it with the way that it has developed and change that as little as possible, and then repeat that outside of that. And so what we are trying to do is to write it, and there are some similarities. I mean, the Halbertir family that built the stone structures, built them also in Fredericksburg and other areas. So there are some similarities with that. But we're not going to try and be any one of those. Everything that we're doing here is trying to be more like Casterville. We don't have, if we don't own the property and we're not doing the development, we're not building the house, and we're not building the commercial thing, we don't have, there's a lot of say that we don't have with it. But we're trying to take every element where we do have some say and make it as appropriate as possible for existing Casterville.
And I'd also like to add that the, there's this as a base, and then there's also those commercial design guidelines that y'all have crafted before. Those are continued, and those are another layer to make sure that they fit a more Casterville effect.
It's handling the characteristics of Highway 90 to create a local Casterville corridor. The, in the analysis of the existing codes, the CZO has so many conflict points with existing patterns, including all of the historic homes, the setbacks, the filled two lines. Yesterday was one of the most eye-opening experiences talking to the citizens that came in. Many of them, their lots are illegal under the current CZO and with the proposed rules would actually bring them into legality. It makes their lots actually legal. Many people were like, this is the greatest thing. We now actually have a legal buildable lot under what we own. They, their houses are now not, legal non-conforming. Their structures are now legal non, they're, they would be legal rather than legal non-conforming. Entire intention, Mr. Alexander, is to create this as Casterville. There has been a thorough analysis of every block and lot. We've walked these streets and it's been extremely calibrated around Casterville. And so the goal is to protect and enhance the existing patterns that you all have.
And so the other...
Everybody else's stuff, but how many of those properties were constructed before the zoning ordinance was created? Right, so there were no rules.
The most beautiful part of Casterville happened before there was zoning, right? But, but not only that...
Are calibrating those in, those beautiful places that you all know and love, that is what these are based off of. It is, it's the foundation for the creation of these districts. It's not anywhere America, it's not one such as all which the current, several of the current CZO standards seem to be. We can't find where these standards came from, but they do not align with Casterville. The existing rules on the book directly conflict with what Casterville has numerous times over.
Got it, and I understand building projects, and I understand that. But, and there's no way I would have had a house or anything that was built before. I didn't know how to add on, etc., whatever, okay? But that's the way that it functioned. But I understand.
So the existing, and I'll get you in just a second. The existing codes that we have under the CZO, would you say that that's been successful east of town down Highway 90? Because what, what is, what it's created is the grand entrance to Casterville is Fast Food Chicken Row. And so that is anywhere USA.
It is a...
Sorry, is that rude?
It is a commercial corridor.
Right.
Okay.
But is it beautiful? Is it Casterville? I mean, that, our codes have created these things. And so to, to the point, we want to make sure that, you know, I know it was separated out into three, and back then, it felt like those were big three. It's really kind of an extension of it. And so it's putting the greater restrictions on all of it so that we don't continue this, perpetuate this anywhere USA. People that drive through Casterville that never stopped to come into Casterville have got no idea. It looks like anywhere. It looks like San Antonio. It looks like everywhere. And so the reason that we combined that is because there was nothing functionally different. You still had things that didn't look good that were happening during those different areas.
That's awful system, and I'm not proud of this, because I did hear it, and I didn't like it. When I first came to the city, they intentionally followed people that cut off the highway and said, why don't you business, go on down the road? That was the attitude in this town.
Yeah.
So, so Highway 90 was more of a church to pass you through and not come off.
Yeah, everybody said that we want to have a moat, and I'm like, well, you had a moat, and you put a bridge over it. Okay, we digress. I'm sorry, you had a, you had another question over here?
I was very confused on that, and what are we transforming? But what's gonna, what does that mean?
That's a great question.
Is that for me?
Well, so the way that we've looked at this through the process is there are things, and I spoke to this at the very beginning. There are things that we want to protect, and there are things that we want to change. I would say, if you look across all of Casterville, are you proud of everything that's been built here over the last hundred years? And I'd say no. There are several things that have been built here that we don't like. What happened 200 years, 180 years ago, there were a lot of great things. And so it's the, the Fast Food Chicken Row, we might not want to, we might want to transform that. If we want to change the, the things that have gone awry, the things that have become anywhere USA, those are the things that we change. The majority of Casterville right now, historic Casterville, where we all live and work and shop, that is, that's the area that we're trying to protect and keep that as much the same as possible. If we're transforming anything, it's in the areas outside and the scar that ripped through Casterville back in the 30s. Yeah.
Could I, could I offer just a slight?
Yes, please.
The city cannot transform anything aside from the lots the city owns. We can change the rules to encourage those places that were not built to look like Casterville to transform. But the city has no authority to come to your lot and say, congratulations, we're replacing your house with something else. The city can't do that.
Yeah.
And the city doesn't have money to do that either.
So that's what I'm concerned about. I am in the historical park, but my little spot is another color. So, you know, it, it does matter.
Is your spot one of the dark blue ones?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to make a valid point.
Yeah.
But, but...
Yeah, well, well, but back in June, we, City Council said, all right, this is our district, district. And then when we started bringing, bringing this presented to us and everything, I brought up the concern of confusion. And I was told, oh, it'll be okay, because the overlay will reflect it. Well, the overlay plays not very well defined on this map of the green line. So from what, from what I understood that to mean is that overlay would protect your lot still as a historic, even if it's a dark blue. Is that, is that correct? Is it still in the historic district?
You and your neighbors go before the HLC before you do any outside changes.
So once again, this is my concern, there's confusion. That overlay is not being seen at all.
Right, we have to make that more clear.
Exactly. And so that's why I said it last time, and that's why I'm going to continue to say it until we... Yes, and that's why it's a concern.
So, I, I will get to you. So this is one of the things that we had talked about before. These are good enhancements, so make sure that you write it down and send it over. Let's keep these compiled so that we do track with them. I hate having to say the same thing multiple times without addressing, yes, we're going to do this, no, we're not going to do this, or this is how we're going to do it, and this is when we're going to do it. So let's make sure that we get that documented over time.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had a question. That's in the existing CZO. That is in our existing codes, and this...
We don't want change in those areas.
Right. The way that that was set up in...
You can buy it.
Okay, let me, sorry, we're getting a little, I want to add to that very specifically. In the existing CZO, it defines exactly where those areas are in our existing codes that we're trying to update and make more clear. It described it, but it never gave you a visual on it. So what we did is we put a visual to what was already in the code. And if people say, we want to take that out of the code, then we take that out of the code. If we get everybody to agree on it, but we, we tried to carry over as much as possible from the CZO, so we're not making massive changes. That would be a pretty significant change that we would have to put through and make sure that people agreed on. So this is part of the process. Does that answer that question? It was already there. I mean, do you trust the people that put together the CZO in the first place? It was, it was already there, and so we moved it over. And if you provide that feedback that that's something that you don't want, then that's something that, and if enough people say, we don't want this, then we take it out. This is, this is about majority. This is about how everybody feels about the place that they live. This is a, you should be a part of that process. Okay, I had another question back here first.
I just had a quick question. He said that your lots is legal, and how does that make the lot legal? Or not be legal?
Can you, can you explain the legal non-conforming?
The, the point is, under the existing CZO, your existing rules, it has specific development standards. And in analyzing the existing development standards, there was an analysis looking at all of the structures. And so the rules that are drafted were attempting to bring all of the structures that exist into compliance. And so instead of having a set standard saying you have to have 10-foot setback, 20-foot front yard, 30-foot rear yard, the ordinance proposal allows ranges. So if there's a beautiful con tree out front, the, the structure can move around on the lot. Or if the existing structure exists zero lot, which you all have all over town, this would propose to make that as an allowable setback. And so now it meets the minimum standards of that zoning district rather than having artificial, artificial depths where many of the structures that exist right now don't, cannot meet those minimum standards.
Okay, so my house has been in, in, in Casterville for over 60 years. And so is that considered illegal or not legal because...
What we would do is, we'd analyze where it is. The goal is to legalize the, the town as it exists today. So under the new proposal, I would imagine it's now would be a legal conforming. It's a zero... But I mean, where is the house built? Is it right up against the street?
Is it right in the middle of...
Yeah, it would be, I mean, that would be...
You're probably legal with a house first.
So, and we can, we can dig into individual lots, but just for an example, if you look at Han's Meat Market is right now legal non-conforming. If you look at Bonnie's House, it's legal non-conforming. If you look at the Coran Store, legal non-conforming. The Dan's Meat Market, legal non-conforming, so...
Because it's a smaller lot.
No, because they're built right on the street.
Many different, yeah, many different reasons. If you look at most of the Pioneer Homes, most of the Pioneers are legal non-conforming. And so it's bringing those into conformance so that they are legal and conforming, because this, these are the patterns that we've seen in existing Casterville.
Commercial, commercial doesn't have a setback, right?
Yeah, those are a setback here, so they are all in the lot. Then you go right up to the front, probably.
Right.
But they are, I may have, I may just want to, I'm just, I want to be dramatic, because I've already perceived, is that true? But I would please ask, if somebody's going to sign the Local Government Code, please make sure what they're signing is accurate. Because 212, 0046 doesn't, doesn't apply.
Well, it's exceptions.
It applies to land adjacent to an airport.
And 0045, I, I cited them both, 0045 was also cited.
I don't want to be dramatic, but I'm just saying, the 2.5 needs to be erased though. For at least one way, it's a very unusual...
Yeah, again, again, in the spirit of working together, if we work against each other, I mean, if you nip back, because you've never been wrong, I've never been wrong.
We've all never been wrong.
Exactly. So we'll, we'll give, we'll give a little bit of grace. But as long as we're aligned on what we're trying to accomplish here, let's make sure that we get those over to them so they can make the changes. These, these people, you have to understand, they're giving us guidance based on their experience, but they, they are working for us. And so if we're saying that these things don't work for us because we feel like people are going to abuse them, then they have no stake in that game.
And to add to that, sir, although people may think otherwise, I really don't have any personal issue with you. However, for the last year, it's been a bunch of a learning curve for them because they may or may not have been provided accurate information on history of Casterville. And they've been having to work through with what they have. So yes, we've had key discussions, but some of it's because we haven't got the full picture. And we're working together to get to that.
Absolutely. And that's part of this process is giving them that bigger picture. They've spent a lot of time learning. And if you think about how long it takes to, to learn a place like, this is a very unique place. And it takes a while, and they're going to make some mistakes along the way. And we will, we will help guide them to the right direction. I'm sorry, you had a question and...
Yes. He, Place Type 4, they're between Paris and London, and then even a little bit past London. It seems like originally, those two, for lack of a better term, large blocks that are now Place Type 4 with a little bit of civic space in them, they are bordering right on Historic Residential. And I think originally, they were designated Historic Residential. Weren't they, weren't they blue before they became heat? No?
No, they were, it was RC is what they were. It was like, yeah, it was, RC was the...
General Residence.
General Residence, GC, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, and...
And they have on the, that social pinpoint website, they have a thing where you can actually, it's like a slider, and you can...
If you're smart enough to do that.
Yeah.
But that answered my question.
Ask your five-year-old, niece, nephew, or grandkids, or they'll tell you.
People need to understand these, because I'll hold back to that Place Type 4, which is a block which had a separate city-level seaport, and a block immediately next to us, and a block across the road in Port... and a block immediately next to us and a block across the road and a apartment next to that. And all that light pink, water, and all of it. And you know, you could build a five to nine meter apartment complex on every lot within that. And maybe there's an open way to do it. So if you want that to become that, you can.
Currently, they build apartments under that some classification.
Absolutely.
As of right now, as they're zone, you can go.
Well, with my story, overall.
I mean, they don't have to come for. They still will.
Okay. Well, this is my next, this is my next question on the district. The current zoning, the CH, the such a business district, the how many come to the historic business district. I want to think about three years ago, the either, I don't know how it's called, tiers, turs, whatever.
Turs.
Basically double the size of that. Is this incorporating that in the new zone?
So we did not change the zoning. The turs that was created was, we saw that there was development happening in downtown. We saw that there was development happening on Highway ninety. And the turs was meant to capture the things that people are spending money on to improve their properties, to improve their business, capturing the additional tax and allowing that, allowing us to use that for the greater public good. For improvements, for other things that would make the town more beautiful, more functional. And so it's just, it's capturing the additional tax that's generated by that. It doesn't change any zoning, doesn't change any uses, it doesn't change any of that.
I know it's not the problem, because that's already resolved. But isn't that tiers expanded beyond the commercial areas?
It's primarily in the commercial areas. We can go, and that that's a separate topic off of this because it's not a part of the zoning, but happy to dig into that with you.
Mr. Mayor, our time has expired. I recommend we schedule another meeting and follow on. This is gonna go on all night.
All right. Are are we at an okay stopping? Because we've got, we have additional meetings coming up. What do we still need to accomplish in this?
We need to get a few policy directions from you all. That's really the goal of tonight. We need some policy direction to finish drafting some of these sections, particularly with ADUs. There's been a lot for the accessory dwelling unit. There is, and it's it's the topic that we're getting the most diverse input on. We've met with you all and the planning commission several times and asked this. We've received direction from you all to continue to allow accessory dwelling units in the back. Where the most hangup is happening is in the historic large lot, P two point five. Our question is, do you all want to allow accessory buildings in P two point five? That's the biggest area where we're receiving conflicting input from the community. So we wanted to validate the community's concerns, bring it back to the policymakers so that we can get guidance from the policymakers.
Are you thinking about accessory living?
Yeah, accessory.
Dwelling.
Right. Accessory dwelling units is basically a living area, a bathroom, and a kitchen.
Not a shed.
Not a shed.
A secondary dwelling unit on the lot.
And and if I may, one adjustment that we have made that's pretty critical. Any non pervious or any pervious cover is calculated as part of the total lot percentage. I know that line was in there before and it shows there now, but this is the the existing draft. We took that out. That was a mistake on my part, but.
But how many nonconforming uses will we have with that? Because when I look at a lot of the.
A lot.
Yeah. So I think that we need to be careful about that. So the bit, I think the bigger concern that I've heard mostly is the accessory dwelling units. I saw in there somewhere there were two allowable, that was outs, that was, I think two turns it into multifamily. One allows you to to bring in your family.
And and the the way that we've adjusted that too is it now is, the draft language that we have now is it's one principal building and one additional building would be considered an accessory dwelling. Cottage Court serves as that exception because it's essentially like a duplex or a triplex, but it's individual homes. Because of that, and this was some adjustment that we made on our end, we're intending to take the cottage court. Well, question to y'all is what to do with those cottage courts? Because there's many of them that exist here, but it might not be, are those legal nonconforming? Should it be a special exception that you put for P two five and and make them legal elsewhere so that you maintain the intent, which is what we're hearing, of one one primary and a possible accessory on P two five? So they're kind of encompassed together.
Can you give me an example of what a cottage court would be?
Yeah.
A structure right across from your house that has multiple buildings that are accessory, multiple living structures. Yeah.
That place you still live.
I know what she's talking about. Mr. Best or his old place right across the back, their bed would be a cottage court.
Okay, well, we don't have to wrong.
Just a couple of questions of clarification. It's September, I believe it was September twenty fourth, I believe it was at City Council meeting, you presented this to the city council. You clearly stated two accessory dwelling units. And I specifically asked you, based on that coverage, I could put two sixteen hundred square foot houses in my backyard. And you said, yes, you could. So that was in September. So now it's changed to one?
Yep.
When was that change made?
Probably the last.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me ask you a question, the second question. I hope it's through the San Antonio rules where it says we're going here. City of Waco rules. One of our rules, one of the limits in the sizes, Waco city's limits an accessory dwelling unit to five hundred square feet.
Oh, right.
The city of Austin limits it to eleven hundred square feet or not to exceed a percentage of a of a house if you have a four car house. Also, the city of Austin, I'm assuming the city of San Antonio and the city of Waco, city of San Antonio, these are good development plans. They require a person that does an accessory dwelling unit, the sign of covenant that's recorded on that property, that the owner must live in either the primary house or the accessory house. It requires that. The point is, my question is, putting it in there without the rules on how it's applied is dangerous. It's dangerous. So that's a policy that has to, the rule has to be put in there on the size, the limitations on the size, how they apply. Also, the other part, I just wanted to make a point of, I think, September meeting also, the city administrator referenced, just after I first discovered utilities. And I recall when we made the joint council, we need to develop a new policy. And it was very clear, it's really outside areas, it wasn't for the core. We agreed to one accessory dwelling unit under one utility service, accessory to the main structure. So we consider standard of, and I will tell you this, and I do my research too. The state of Texas says you must, you will go under the same water source as the main structure, unless there's a capacity issue. It also requires, it also says you can go under the same electric service. You go, if you get a second's electric service, you have a second address. And or there's not capacity in the original electric service. Those are little rules, okay? These are the life of the house before you adopt accessory buildings. Because there's no legal requirement for us to do that.
So a couple of points of clarification. So first, I've just gotta, I've gotta ask you, did you really just quote Austin and San Antonio and Waco? Did you just really actually refer to the codes and ordinance of?
Yes, I did.
I'm messing with you. I I'm messing with you, I'm messing with you, so.
They wrote policies.
Yeah.
You're saying we shouldn't copy Fredericksburg, though, and then you quote Austin, isn't it? That's the irony he's trying to point out.
I'm just. I'm just messing with you, man. I know what you're saying. I'm get, okay, so let's, let's. Bruce, I know. I don't. I was, I was being playful with you. So, okay, so the point of clarification, the actual one, is so what we're we're asking for? Because what they're asking for is actual policy guidance. And so I I wanna get back to, like, challenge them for whatever. They have made some mistakes and they've rectified a lot of mistakes, and we're here to help them rectify more. So what I'm hearing is no more than one accessory dwelling unit has to be on the same utility. I think that we've rectified part of that with the lot coverage. I wonder about the impervious cover, does that include driveways?
Darren, do you think that is nonpermeable with the lot cover?
Okay. You had a question?
I've been thinking about this separate to single utility. And as long as the primary person is living, as long as the the owner has to be living on the property. For instance, think about it, someone wants their mother to be on the back of the property. Well, then five years later, the mother passes away and now they want to rent out the back part. Or a lady lives in the front and then to supplement her income, she can rent out the one that her kids are on. And it really is very difficult because I I know of some people that when they have a renter and a single utility, but what's the big deal about having a separate utility as long as the owner has to live on the property? So I've changed my thoughts.
I don't think that you can, yeah, and that's that's the tough thing. Because you can't guarantee that that same, like, if they sell it, you're not gonna tear down the the ADU.
But, hey, this is where I would reference.
And this is, this is good discussion.
This is where I went, referenced the other tiers. And I can show it to you, in their development package, they actually have covenant that on a part of the permitting process, they must sign, according to the county records, that's a covenant of the land. So any future owner knows, they have owner occupied to maintain that accessory dwelling.
So, 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 yeah. So the owner of the property has to reside on the property to have a separate family member living in the. And and I, and so in other words.
Owner rented or what?
Yeah. And otherwise, they can't, if if they move away from the property and they rent the property out, they can't, they can only rent out one of the structures. They can't rent out the second one.
That's correct.
So by doing that, you protect yourself against this whole need for separate utilities where I could see with a a lady who has rented out a back building to someone else, a renter, it'd be much easier for her to be able to say, no, you have to pay for your air conditioner back there, instead of trying to. It it, but we don't need that safeguard if the owner has to live on the property, in my mind.
And I don't want to argue with you because that that protects you from just suddenly investing, it'll be multiple levels.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Why are we doing an accessory at all? Living accessory? Why did that come to be, I miss that?
We have a lot of people that are already doing it.
I understand grandfathering.
No, but I'm saying that a lot of people that are already doing it, not necessarily grandfathering, but they're already doing it. They build, they build an accessory dwelling or accessory unit on your property. It doesn't have, the dwelling has to have a kitchen and bathroom and bedroom. They don't necessarily put the kitchen in, but they put the bathroom and the bedroom in, and then they later put the kitchen in. So it's, we're just like allowing people to do it.
Well, they're being sneaky.
Well, doing it is sneaky, but we're not gonna make inspection on it. We don't get to be where we can enforce it, like you said, where we can make regulation on it. Because of that, of course, there's just the accessory or accessory unit that we don't have any regulation on. So if you make it an actual enforceable item, then we can't even say regulation by it. If we just say you can't hire, people are still gonna do it, and they're gonna do it wrong, so.
But I disagree with that. And I I disagree with the part that if you're gonna allow it, now people are gonna build it. If you're gonna, if you want to go around, if you wanna go around and do what you're supposed to do and enforce the rules, then you do that on the current thing. But why are we gonna allow, okay, for my social contract with the city, I have a large lot of luxury buildings. When I purchased the lot, it's a very large, wide lot. I live in the mid country, but I know breed edition, very large, wide lots. When I bought that, I never would have ever thought that my neighbor next door could put a one or two-story little building right near my fence line and have their mother-in-law live in it. That is not what I ever envisioned, and I don't like that, and I don't know why we're gonna allow that.
But we also have had, I mean, I, no, but we also had a lot of positive feedback from this. I know people, I know there's people that are against it, but I've had significantly more positive feedback on this than I've had. I I, and I talked to, it's since I quit the job.
The many should have a city about that.
Well, like, we go to the city council, we're city manager.
Okay, so it's.
Okay, so what the, so the answer to this.
What about the people that, like me and all the people that already own lots here, what happened to our social contract?
So what we're talking about, I'm sorry, Councilman Cary, add it.
Part of your social contract is is what the restrictive covenants that came with the subdivision, and that protects you from that. If the if the restrictive covenants say one residence per lot, then that's, this is not gonna override that. The zoning and this this ability to do this, do accessory buildings in some parts of the city will not override the restrictive covenants of the subdivision.
Okay, I guess I don't understand why we're gonna allow it to, to, we're gonna allow people to build them now if you do this, what you're talking about, and then it can easily become a greenhouse. Why do we want that in our city?
So.
I don't think people want that.
I would love the ability to generate income from my property to help.
Okay, I understand, of course, but you also are, you are supposed to be representing your district.
I know.
Okay, so.
Why would anybody?
We're gonna bring this into.
I'm telling you.
I'm gonna ask, let's keep this civil. We're talking about differences differences of opinions, please.
I just feel this can be, I just, because I don't agree with something you guys think doesn't mean I'm a non-civil person.
No problem. I just wanna make sure that we just keep things civil and understand that he is both a, and I'm not, I'm not saying anything about you, I'm just saying, let's, let's make sure it doesn't get out of hand. Hold on. So council members absolutely represents people. He also has personal opinions, and we've heard personal opinions from a lot of people. So it's not, we, we're not listening to any specific individuals. We're here to to serve the people, and we've had a lot more people say, we think this is good, than we've had people say that it's bad. But I think that, wait, I'm not done. I understand that, and that is something that we have to struggle with. But the thing that we have to do.
I struggle a lot with that.
I, I understand that.
I struggle with my family, with these people over here, and I do know exactly what you want.
No. Right. Well, and that's, that's the thing that we're trying to do through this process. It's easy to get things wrong, and we're trying to do it. What we don't want, I think that we all agree, we don't wanna have, we don't wanna turn a bunch of multifamily out of single-family homes. We don't wanna bring in, what's that?
Then why would we do that? Why would we allow that?
Oh, I'm so sorry, please.
I just know we came here twenty-nine and a half years ago, and I don't know about all, but for us, our home is our most valuable possession. We don't have stock portfolios, we're not trust fund babies, we're just hardworking people that wanted to live here in the house that I fell in love with. And I never, when I moved there, I never envisioned that next door to me might be a place that has a house and then another house in essence. And I personally don't want that. I want, I'm selfish, I want my dream to stay my dream, nobody to mess with it, I'll be a hundred percent honest. And so I kind of feel like we might be opening the door to something that could really go wrong, could really go sideways, but that's just my opinion.
Right.
I have one question.
Yep.
On detail. What is the scale of this section? That's our question back to you all.
The scale of the lines.
We're asking us, the commission and the council, would you all like to put size limitations? We've asked this before when we worked with Van Derick in Texas, they made theirs, can't be more than eight hundred square feet. And some places make them that they can't be two stories. This is at the will of the council and the community. You all can make it say whatever you want. We will put the words on the page based on what you all give us direction to. We need direction, we're gonna answer this.
But and as a percentage of the lot itself, right?
The lot coverage.
Yes. Yes, forty percent of the lot coverage, and everything is coming from sidewalks, driveways, garages.
I'll get you in a moment, hold on. Nancy McKing?
Several things related to this, it is very important. I I've, I've received one email not in favor of this, and I've received at least half a dozen or eight emails. Um, I, I, I've received one email not in favor of this, and I've received at least half a dozen or eight emails in support of this, because it's the mother-in-law thing, it's for all these different reasons. But you live where I live, hopefully you know where I live, just right down from Landmark Inn. We have an eight hundred square foot historic home on the front of our property. We do not have a kitchen there, we only have a bedroom and a bathroom, and we built a three thousand square foot home on the back of the property. And all under city rules and went before the HLC and everything else. So when you go around town, you'll see where there's different properties like this in the historic area. So, and I realize what you're saying is, for instance, if we said, oh, the back structure has to be smaller than the front, then I'm going to have a non-conforming lot, which is not a problem with me, except it is all of a sudden off the boat. Um, but, but more likely than not, and if you all could verify in Country Village and also in River Miss, uh, River Bluff, if the restrictive covenants, I, I'm, I've never seen a restrictive cover in a, in a neighborhood that would allow you to build a second residential. And, and I doubt that's allowed in there, but, so those people in those areas, you're covered, covered, covered.
One residence per.
But, but, so again, this is a very passionate topic, and I think this is a very important thing. But Mayor, I don't think we're going to solve it tonight.
Right.
And it's up to you.
Okay, please, yep.
The, the, well, I am trying to be here. Last legislative session, the Senate passed it, but passed it in a decade or two. But it specifically, there, there, they specifically exempted properties, uh, under HOA or D restriction, or historic properties which were under historic restrictions. Those were limited, those were out of the rules for, to allow accessory dwelling. It didn't pass, okay? But if it had passed, it would exempt almost most of the properties that you're talking about. The historic district wouldn't allow them. Country Village, less time. Uh, River Bluff, wouldn't allow them. But that didn't pass. And the way this is put here, it doesn't talk about D restrictions, saying, sir, yes, Country Village has D restrictions. I'm very familiar with those, the house is one of those. We yielded to those, we have to, because the city does not enforce D restrictions. That's a property owner against a property owner. The city ordinances do not comply with D restrictions.
Agreed.
Do not comply.
Totally agree.
So, so unless you pick that out of the zoning, but right now, the blue, which is those subdivisions, allows accessory dwelling. So there would be a.
So let's do this, I, there's enough. There's enough consternation over the ADUs. Let's, let's take that as a separate, uh, investigation, and that way we can continue with the rest of it. I want to find the, the big sticking points. I don't want them to stop the rest of the process, I also don't want the process to ignore them. Uh, we got to deal with these things, but we've got a lot of other things to deal with as well. So if we're okay with it, uh, were there other, so ADUs, we're going to have to look at very specific things, uh, and we'll talk about that in depth, like as a separate item. Uh, what other clarification, sorry?
There were two things in the definitions at the back of the document. Um, it, it specifies, like, the first, i- it's alphabetical, so these are right towards the top. Accessory buildings must be smaller than and behind the main structure. Accessory dwellings are secondary units toward the rear of the lot. So I think as it's written now, it would specify that they must be smaller than the main building. Uh, although that could be brought forward a little bit better.
Yeah, but we've, we have to, let's, again, that's something I think we need to dig into, and there, we can go into the reasons for that, uh, when we actually go into it, but let's do that as a separate item. What other clarification did you need?
Um.
You had some specific things that you had heard, uh, differing feedback on?
Yeah, I'll go to the height, um, limit. Um, so we heard a couple discrepancies about height limit policy, particularly in, um, P four. I've heard requests for three, um, so it's a policy question, um, particularly for P four. Uh, could it be allowed to be three stories rather than two and a half?
Currently, this is a carryover from the CZO.
Yep.
And so in the CZO, it says two and a half stories?
Correct.
So what three-story buildings do we have in, what is P four?
The Moy Center is. Correct, yeah.
Okay.
It's commercial, isn't it?
Uh, that's civic.
Right now, it's on single-family residential.
Yeah, in.
Historic.
In the, the, uh, draft, it's, uh, civic space, yeah.
It allows, it allows the CZO, currently, currently, especially about forty-eight, along the island.
Hmm. Yeah.
Well, Council, what we wanted in commission, what, what we wanted to do is, just like you all know, we've heard, uh, requests to make this one story, and we've heard requests to make it three stories. The current is two and a half, um, so this may be the balance, and this is also what's existing now, so we just wanted to call it to your attention. We're trying to, to create the balance of conversation so that you all hear the communities.
Just to help people, can you define what two and a half stories is?
What's a half-story?
Half a story is basically, um, where the, um, second floor finished elevation is. So the first floor can be between fourteen and twenty-five feet. The second story can no longer, can't be more than fourteen feet, and so it's half a story would be seven feet.
I guess the definition, which I remember a couple of years ago, was, is that you just can't put a bathroom on the third floor.
Yeah, that's kind of how we, yeah, that's, that's how you get to the story.
Yeah, you can have three stories.
But it can't have a bathroom.
Can't have a bathroom on the third floor.
That's what y'all want to do, like.
I mean, that's what the current, that's what the current rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, which questions y'all, it's how you want to define it.
That's coming on really to carry it forward. Who carries forward like that? I've, I've never heard the definition where there's, if there's a bathroom, then it's not considered.
It's a story.
If, is that how you all would like to carry that forward? That would give us direction.
I'm just telling you, that's.
Well, I'm going to throw this out there, with the height thing, is like for the areas near the airport.
I know that we're talking about P four right now.
I, I'm, well, I'm, it was height limit, I'm looking at all of them across the board.
Yeah.
So P five does three max, is that well, within the FAA rules?
The FAA will supersede any.
That's why I'm asking this question.
I think by the time you're a hundred yards from the airport, it's fifty feet, basically.
EC.
So, let's, let's deal right now with P four, are we okay? I think it's safest if we leave P four the way that it is currently, two and a half stories is.
Fine, great.
Does anybody disagree with that?
That's all the, I mean, that's all the stuff around Moy, right?
Yes.
Right, well, Moy is not P four, Moy is.
But like, right there in its surroundings.
Right.
Which is what currently in the historic district.
And so the HLC would have design review over it. So, the, the question. The, there was a question I asked, and I'm not sure I got the answer to it. How ma, how tall is the Steinbach House? Is that two and a half, or is that three?
It's three stories.
Hmm?
The city's except for.
I know, but I think that, like, the Steinbach House on Houston Square makes sense.
It doesn't have a bathroom in the top, I'll say.
Well, they're not going to build the Steinbach House.
No.
If they're in the HLC.
The, this, I can tell you, the Steinbach House falls under the city's criteria for height and number of stories.
I guess I'm asking, like, to me, P five, three stories, that seems like Moy Center. Two and a half, trying to think of an example, in Castroville, it, I come up with the Steinbach House.
Two and a half stories, yeah. It has a door on the roof, it's correct, it's a two-and-a-half story building, zero block, right against the street, that's a perfect example.
Paul, what about your house? I remember Carol Romano was real torn up about the height of that house.
She wasn't the only one.
Are you two or two and a half?
It's two and a half.
The height, by the way, and help me here, what's the height, Brianna?
So, I mean, if you look at the definition of our height.
Well, no, I mean, just what is the number?
It says, it says thirty feet or two and a half.
Two and a half stories are thirty feet, but the thirty feet only measures to the difference between the E's. About the E's and the medium between the two E's and all these things.
It's thirty feet.
Measured from ground level or from finished floor level?
No, it's not measured from ground level or finished floor level, it's measured from the E's, that's what I'm telling you.
What is this?
If, if.
On the bottom.
On a sloped house like this, you take the height, the very tall, and you take the E, and you take the halfway distance of that, and that has to be thirty feet. So you could actually have a, a house that's thirty-five feet tall, under our existing cur, ordinances, because if you have a ten-foot difference.
Like that house up there.
Yeah, like that house there, you don't go from the very tip, you go the halfway distance between the tip and the edge of the roof, the E.
About it, does she measure from the ground or the top of the floor?
From the ground.
From the ground.
Okay.
And that's what the current ordinance says. On E house. There's a, if you look at the ordinance, it tells you about five different structures, and it's a flat roof for this. But that's what the current ordinance says, and that's why I'm saying the Steinbach House is well within.
So what I'm hearing is, right now, let's leave that at two and a half, what other clarification did you want?
That, that should be.
ADU was the main bulk of the process.
Yeah, and, and, and to be clear, I, I'd be curious on, on you, Mayor, on how you want to go about getting that clarification. Uh, last time, whenever we came over the ADU, we sent a packet, we can do that again. I just want to know the process, because this really is like, kind of the sticking point, and, and a lot of this, we're cleaning up and wrapping up, but in terms of the process for us, like, we're, we're pretty close, and, um, this is the last hang-up, so.
Okay.
I'd be curious on how y'all want to proceed.
All right, let me, uh, let's, let's noodle on that, and we'll get back with you in the next couple of weeks, is that all right?
Great, yeah.
We'll figure out the best way to have a good open process.
That sounds good.
We're going to wrap things up for right now, but we, did we have other, you had, still had a question, comment, Val?
I still have a question.
Sorry, which one?
I'm asking you, how did that ever come to be? How did that get all booked?
Okay, well, I was going to go into, what, what came up with that? First of all, there's a lot of them, uh, and the other one is. I'm trying to tell you. Right? So this, it was, it was an evolution across a bunch of different things. Um, part of it was that we looked at what is already here and said, we tried to identify the things that are here and say, do we want them or do we not want them? And we've done that with everything. Accessory dwelling units was one of them. And one of the things, as we talked to different people about it, how do you feel about it, what do you think about it? And some people said, I don't want it because it creates multifamily. Some people said, I'd love to be able to have it because, like with me, um, if my mom had passed before my dad, my dad couldn't have taken care of a yard, we would have wanted to maybe put him in ours. And so it's accommodating all levels of life with my kids. If they wanted to, might not want them in my house, but I wouldn't mind having them in my backyard, because they aren't as clean as always they need to be. Then you have that, but it's.
How many of the people, and you may never know, from their honesty, how many are wanting it because you want it?
Right, and I think that some, I think that some of them have, I don't, uh, it, what scares me is creating a place that has so many more people than we already have. What scares me is creating a place that it, it changes, we've talked about the social contract. We want to keep our built environment as close to, to what it is right now, and if, uh, if we determine that there's going to be widespread abuse, I don't think there's going to be widespread abuse with it. It doesn't scare me, but I'm definitely cautious about it, but this isn't just, this is what we talked about with a bunch of different people. I would like to dig into that in a separate conversation, if that's okay, specifically about ADUs, uh, and we can talk about the rest offline, if that's all right. Okay, um, did you still have a question? No, okay.
I would, I would just hope that if you use that, that we create a policy on specifics on size and, or location, so specifically, so that's the hope.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's do this, so make sure that you capture all of the protections that you'd want to put in place, talk to people. Um, everybody here and everybody that's watching online, talk to your representatives from planning and zoning, from city council. Let's talk about the things that we want to, that, that we want to avoid, the biggest things, and the things that we want to accomplish, that's. And then we'll draw the rules from that. So what will probably happen is, well, I got to figure out how we advertise it, and how we make sure that we get all voices heard and all of that, uh, and how we set that up, but it's probably going to be just a separate meeting with it. We might even do it during a regular council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, did I miss anything, did anybody? I'm sorry? We're not adjourned yet. Houston, sit down. Okay, Kyle, we're not, we're not adjourned yet. Yep. If I can have everybody just, we're not adjourned yet, please have a seat, we're wrapping up. So, I'm sorry, you had said.
I was just going to ask you, sir, are we going to have another one of these meetings before the other one, or before the actual public hearing starts?
My, my preference is doing it before the next public hearing. Uh, maybe the first, uh, first meeting in January, it probably won't be this, this month. Uh, I don't think we can put everything together in that amount of time, but we'll talk about that. We'll figure out, we'll try and get it before the next public meeting, uh, and that way we can have something like this. All right, is there anything else from the board of the council? All right, you want to close yours out? Okay, and city council is also adjourned at eight thirty-four. Okay, great, cool, thank you.